I'll call this meeting to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Emily Quinn of the High Faith Community.
Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
O thou kind Lord, these are thy servants who have gathered in this meeting, have turned unto thy kingdom, and are in need of thy bestowal and blessings. O thou God, manifest and make evident the signs of thy oneness which have been deposited in all the realities of life. Reveal and unfold the virtues which thou hast made latent and concealed in these human realities. O God, we are as plants, and thy bounty is as the rain. Refresh and cause these plants to grow through thy bestowal. We are thy servants, freest from the fetters of material existence. We are ignorant, make us wise. We are dead, make us alive. We are material, and thou us with spirit. We are deprived, make us the intimates of thy mysteries. We are needy, enrich and bless us from thy boundless treasury. O God, resuscitate us. Give us sight, give us hearing. Familiarize us with the mysteries of life so that the secrets of thy kingdom may become revealed to us in this world of existence, and we may confess thy oneness. Every bestowal emanates from thee, every benediction is thine. Thou art mighty, thou art powerful, thou art the giver, and thou art the ever-bounteous. Abdul Baha.
Councilmember Hamm? Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Mayor Ward?
Here.
And Mayor Potem is absent. The first item on the agenda is presentation of a proclamation to Wade Greenleaf of San Clemente Veterans of Foreign Wars proclaiming May 27th and 28th as Buddy-Papi Days.
Okay, today I have the honor of declaring Buddy-Papi Days. And you come every year-
We do.
...to do this, and so I would like you just to say a little bit about what this is to the public.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The members of the EFW San Clemente Post are gratified by the proclamation. One hundred percent of our income, one hundred percent, goes to support those who fought in World War II: Korea, Vietnam, the Gulf Wars, Afghanistan, and Iraq. As well as certain of the active-duty folks, including the San Onofre Marines and the USO. We thank you for your support. In some small way, we thank those who gave so much for us. If I may, Madam Mayor, we'll pass the poppies around. We normally do that, and we appreciate all of the support.
I knew you were going to ask that, so I had mine ready.
There you go. Have a take a poppy as well.
Pass that around.
Thank you.
While we do that, I just want to say, therefore I, Kathy Ward, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, California, acting on behalf of the City Council and citizens of San Clemente, to hereby proclaim May 27th, 2017 through May 28th, 2017, as Buddy-Papi Days.
Super. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I knew that can was coming. It's tradition to start with the council. Next, we have a presentation. Is Rod Malott here?
He's not.
Oh.
Ian Burton.
Ian?
Sorry.
Nice to see you.
My pleasure.
We'll forget that.
Okay.
Today, we are going to declare that, on behalf of the City Council, that, and citizens of San Clemente, we declare May 22nd through May 29th National Beach Safety Week. And would you talk a little bit to the public about what that is? What we try to do for this week?
Sure, Council and members of the public. We use that week, kind of leaving into Memorial Day weekend, obviously, as a summer kickoff. And the lifeguard headquarters is going to have an open house on Saturday, the 27th, from 9:00 to noon. We want people to come down, take a tour, meet some of your fellow lifeguards, see what we do, what our headquarters is all about, what capabilities we have out of that building, meet some of the folks that protect you while you're at the beach, and learn about some of the beach hazards and things to be aware of when you're out there on the beach.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for all the work you're doing to protect us from sharks also.
You betcha. It'll be-
Appreciate that.
I wondered if that question was going to come from over here. I never would have thought. But no, it'll-
I personally am, you know, if I don't hear from you, I'm assuming that we haven't seen anything out there.
Um, not today.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be an interesting summer. I mean, I believe our chief is coming in two weeks to give a presentation.
Great.
We might look at having our, the Long Beach University expert back out again, possibly. It'll be, it'll be a summer, you know, that we all learn from, so.
But as far as Beach Safety Week, it is good to be aware of all the hazards that are in the water-
Absolutely.
-and look at the conditions, including the wildlife that's around.
Yes, yes. And when you come down to the beach, I mean, we always recommend just talking to a lifeguard that's up in the tower. They've, they're the experts. They've been there for a while, probably, if you come down at noon. They'll be able to tell you where the rip currents are. They'll tell you, hey, you know, this is actually a surfing spot, you know? We try to leave this area for surfing, you know? It's safer to swim down here. Hey, we've had stingrays today. So always come down, and the first thing we recommend is talking to your lifeguard that's on scene there, and they'll kind of give you a rundown on what the conditions are for the day.
(Inaudible)
I don't think we have that on our PA system.
No, and I try not to mentally think of that when I'm in the water also.
You and me both.
So, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of San Clemente, I do hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2017 through May 29th, 2017, as National Beach Safety Week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we will try to have, we will-[968.43][968.43](Applause) And we will try to carry that Beach Safety Week into a year-long beach safety campaign. So, thank you.
You always do.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Next is a presentation by Assistant City Manager Sund and Deputy Administrative Services Director Vincent concerning the fiscal year 2017 Third Quarter Financial Report.
Laura, if you could pull up the PowerPoint. So, you got the quarterly report. That's before you tonight, so I want to touch on a few things as it relates to the quarterly report. So specifically, if you look at it, again, my name's Eric Sund, Assistant City Manager. Cut to the chase, if you see the sun, that's a good thing. If you see a dark cloud, that's a bad thing. And so what we've always used as a part of our financial indicators is those symbols to let you know things are looking sunny, or there's a potential gloom upon us in the future. Some of the finer points as it relates to our general fund reserves as of March 31st, 2017, is we've seen a $1.1 million increase in property tax. And there's a couple of contributing factors to that. The biggest one being based on reassessed valuation, as well as the property, excuse me, Prop 8 write-downs that are also catching up to us. So, in addition to that, we're also seeing the Houses in Sea Summit and the property as it relates to the Marblehead development as well, that attribute to the increase in our property taxes. The biggest thing that the council should be aware of is our sales tax right now. As of March 31st, we're at about a $6.1 million amount in revenue. If you look at the prior years, March of 31st of 2015, we're at about 4.6. And March 31st of 2016, we're at about 4.3. So we are seeing a number of factors that contribute to that sales tax, whether it's the outlets, whether it's the Estrella Shopping Center with Sprouts and TJ Maxx. All of those are showing signs of contributing to our increase in sales tax. The biggest comment that needs to be made as it relates to general fund expenditures is where we're at in the budget and where we're at with actual expenditures. And so, as of, again, March 31st, 2017, we're at about $73 million budgeted, keeping in mind that also includes capital improvement projects in addition to our operating budget. And we're at about an actual spend of about $45.5 million. So, 62% give or take of our spend, so we're at a good spot with that.
Thank you. That budget number, that's not for our, that's the full year, correct?
Correct. That's the full year and what we're spending.
Okay.
Keeping in mind, when I say as of March 31st, if there was other appropriations made thereafter to appropriate additional funds, that wouldn't be reflective in this. So again, as of the March 31st, we're at about 62%. Very good place to be as we close in on the end of the fiscal year, which obviously ends in June, and we'll be reporting back to you. Right now, as we see operating position based on budget amounts of, again, of March 31st, we're seeing a positive operating position of about $200,000. So, that is good as we come into the home stretch with the close of the financial year, and also look at our operating surplus. And so that kind of segues into our budget process. And so, as you know, we'll be getting budget books to the council probably tomorrow morning. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll be sending out emails to you, and then we'll be having our budget hearing on the 22nd to begin that process. And so, what I do want to give as a cautionary to the council is, things are looking really good as we close out this fiscal year, but as we forecasted in the long-term financial plan of 2017, the outline years do not look good. And so, one of the big themes going into the budget this year for the next fiscal year will be to kind of hold that money to prepare for those future deficits so that we can weather both pension costs that we know will be going up, as well as public safety contract costs that are increasing as well. So with that, I'll conclude my report, and I stand ready to answer any council questions that you may have. Just looking for a receive and file. Is that correct? That's not a special presentation, so not even a receive and file?
Don't have to.
Thank you.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, which is to give his or her presentation.
Okay, I have several speaker cards. I'm going to call three names at a time. Would you please come up and stand behind each other? The first speaker will be Sharif, Armanis, Richard Noble, and Christine Williams. Are you Sharif?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and speak. Thank you.
All right. I'm here today to, for the audiences, for closing down the programs for mental health. As you know, we assist and help clients that have addiction to help them to recover part of the program. So for me, and all of us, we like to assist the clients in help. By shutting down the programs, the, for mental health, it's only going to make it worse for them. So please, do not close the ordinances. Thank you.
Richard Noble?
Can I hand these to you?
Followed by Christine Williams?
Copy of the proclamation, green ordinance, which you're permitted to wear this month, which is this month, and training manual, I'll set that right here, which all sober livinghouse managers study and are trained in. And, good after, good evening, council, and residents of the City of San Clemente. My name is Richard Noble, and I am here to present the city with a beautiful proclamation that we have worked on. And it reads, "Sober Residents' Day, May 16th, 2017. Whereas the City of San Clemente listens to fake and unscientific reports and testimonies that are biased and unreasonable, and whereas the City of San Clemente chooses to pass hateful and ignorant ordinances that target the disabled, and whereas the City of San Clemente wilfully and knowingly chooses to use the word lodging to circumvent the terms disability in housing which is misleading and manipulative to the public and to the courts," Mr. City Attorney. "Whereas the proliferation of licensed leases increases the diversity and character of neighborhoods and communities, the community awareness," sorry, pardon me, my glasses "whereas the proliferation of licensed leases increases the diversity and character of the neighborhoods with community awareness and 24-hour staffing, and whereas neighborhoods are safer in San Clemente from intruders due to professional staff being always awake and on the lookout for suspicious activity in the neighborhoods and who work with the neighbors and police to keep the residents and neighborhoods safe, and whereas it is unlawful and morally repugnant to conduct human segregation within the city of San Clemente that the City of San Clemente is now engaged in, and whereas we further conclude and hereby ordain as follows: People with disabilities will not be subject to dehumanizing segregation, furthering a damaging stigma that perpetuates continuous harm. Sober residences are lawful and are welcomed and encouraged. Discrimination targeting the disabled, excuse me, the disabled is deplorable, and it is just and right to repeal San Clemente City ordinances 1616 and 1622. Now therefore I, Richard Noble, your neighbor, declare May 16th, 2017, as San Clemente Sober Residents' Day, and hereby demand the repeal of ordinances 1616 and 1622." And I'd like to present this to the staff, please.
Okay, next speaker is Christine Williams, followed by Barum Vazdamin and Bernard Oakley.
Good evening, council, and thank you for letting me speak in the community of San Clemente. My name is Christine Williams. I'm a case manager and I'm subset abuse counselor. I deal with mental illness every day and build on illnesses, and I want to share my day with you respectfully, with your community and to you. So I wrote something for you today to share with because my family also suffers from mental illness and what I deal with on a daily basis in my family. You asked me, you asked why, me, who suffers from mental illness? One day I woke up and my life changed. Every day it's a fight to go to work, to take a bus, to take a shower. Fear overcoming me, I can't breathe. I try to act normal. I try, they try to understand me, unmanageable. My pain, my struggles, my nightmares. I did not choose this. I did not ask for this. Was I born with this? It's not, I am not faking this. I'm just trying to do the best I can. See, this is just not my family. It's in everyone's family. Please don't forget about us and lock us away. Yes, we are sick, but it's not our fault. We need help. You see, I'm a, I'm a veteran that fought in two wars and 23 years on the police force, and today I can't even drive a car with my anxiety. And my wife doesn't know what to do with me. This treatment center has saved my life, and today I am now a husband. Thank you very much for letting me share.[1621.83][1621.83](Applause)
Go ahead, step up. Will you pronounce your first name?
Yes, it's Bear Mogadom. I'm a San Clemente resident, and I just want to plead to repeal the ordinances for the 1616 and the 1622. I do feel it is unlawful, and I believe that treatment facilities are the answer. We need to be aware of mental illnesses. This is something that, if you look to yourself and your family members think, you know, there must be someone that you know that is affected by mental illness. If not, God bless you. But I know several people in my personal life that this affects, and treatment facilities are the answer, and awareness is the answer. We need to kind of address this in a more advanced way of thinking. Obviously, some of you know veterans, children, mothers, daughters, brothers, sisters, husbands, suffering with something as simple as depression, and it could progress into obvious, serious matters, including suicidal ideation. So, let's, let's consider that when we're thinking about our community and what it is to be a community, because it's, it's really something where we as Americans need to kind of band together. We always look to, look abroad when we're thinking of protecting kind of globalization of different countries and, you know, things that are happening in other countries, but we really need to look within ourselves and protect ourselves as Americans. And I, I think that this is the future of the way us as America is going to really unite. Thank you.[1724.33][1724.33](Applause)
Following Mr. Oakley, would Jacob Bennett please step up, and Thomas Witten?
Hello, my name's Bernard Oakley. I'm here to repeal the hateful ordinance 1616 and 1622. We want you guys to realize that mental health matters. The ordinance are going against those. I know the City Attorney spoke last week saying that they're not, and unfortunately, they do affect the ability for us to be able to help these people. That's all. Thank you.[1761.51][1761.51](Applause)
Hello, I'm Jacob Bennett. Please repeal the ordinances of 1616 and 1622, attempting to inhibit those in dire need of treatment. People suffering from mental health should not have to fight the community in order to be a part of it. What we do is save lives. Please continue to allow us to do so.[1786.27][1786.27](Applause)
My name is Tom Witten from San Clemente, and I find that I'm often the voice of the majority that- majority that are invisible here in San Clemente. I attended the last meeting, had some very serious thoughts about it, and then I saw an article in the paper, spurred me to speak at this meeting. The people that spoke at the May 2 meeting, for the most part, in the green shirts, were people that supported this, and I don't disagree that this is a very needed thing for people with addictions. However, the ordinances are to limit the proliferation and out-of-control spread of these particular units. Now, we saw that the people at the last meeting, many of them commute to San Clemente, and this is a job for them. And I'm not saying that they are not dedicated, they don't do something that's really worthy, but on the other hand, it's a job for them, and the more places in San Clemente, the more jobs there are available. When we had the meeting for the ordinances prior to them being enacted, we had a litany of people coming in here who basically own properties and who also were in a position of being financially gained from having these units. And I stood at that meeting and said that I'm basically speaking for the silent minority, majority, silent majority. And I would like to say for the silent majority, we came to San Clemente to be in our little beach community and to basically live in peace and tranquility. A few of these houses around are surely not gonna be overwhelming, but too many of them will be. So I just would like to read from you very quickly that in the May 11 San Clemente Times is a letter by Perry Poskett, which I thought was very appropriate for this discussion. Sober Living House discussion at the May 2 city council meeting was pitiful in many ways. Pitiful because the drug and alcohol problems that we have here in America and the people who are suffering from these addictions. Pitiful because the state and federal government had tried to transfer drug rehabilitation rehab treatment to a city issue, creating turmoil in our neighborhoods. Pitiful because the majority of the speakers were all associated with drug rehab businesses, invested interest, and stayed gainfully employed to the detriment of our neighborhoods' safety and our quality of life. And pitiful because there are people who believe that they have the right to operate a rehabilitation home business in the middle of a family neighborhood. Our state and federal governments have failed this now classifying drug addiction as a disability. This is a slap in the face of those who are, have disabilities not because of their poor choices, but because they were born that way. Government-supported mental health treatment should be provided by the government, not subcontracted out for profit businesses who make money at the sake of disrupting the quality of life and property values of our client, citizens. The speakers who spoke in favor of the sober living drug rehab houses in San Clemente and for the appeal of the city ordinance regulating transitory lodging were likely employees for a profit rehab provider with a vested interest and seemed as if they had been coached to spin the truth. The city council should be applauded for their stance to protect our citizens and sustain the quality of life for the people who permanently live in San Clemente. Allowing businesses to run in the middle of neighborhoods is plain wrong, so many angles that doesn't deserve further commentary. I just want to say I applaud the city council for the actions that you've taken, and I would like you to stay the course. The next attack is gonna be district voting, and it specifically will be to break this issue open again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was our last speaker.
Could we have a motion, a way of reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
Second.
Motion by Ham, second by Swartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Close session report, City Attorney.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action.
Do you have anything to pull?
LMO.
L-M-O?
Yep.
Sounded like you were saying something else.
Yeah.
Lori? None?
Move the balance.
Motion to move the balance by Donchad. Second by Swartz, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Item L.
So the first item we have is the lease agreement for bait and tackle concession at the municipal pier. So in researching the staff's recommendation, I found out that the proposal that we have recommended before us has been modified significantly. Is that accurate, Eric?
Originally, the proposal that was submitted was kind of a, two different proposals in one, so you had, you know, Mr. Shipley submitting for the concessionaire at the end of the pier, and then you had the other individual, the female, submitting for the North Beach concessionaire. So it's kind of a mix-up proposal.
Okay. You know, my concern is that the pier concession is a pretty important concession for San Clemente, and I just want to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to put in an acceptable bid that's complete and matches a bid specifically for what they're looking for. And so I'm gonna ask that we send this back out to RFP to see if we can get a couple more people interested, or if Mr. Shipley can reapply with an individual proposal, not one with a partnership that's no longer gonna be in place.
Yeah. So do we end up combining the two proposals into one, or how's that, how did that work?
No, so as the staff report indicated, that there was a relinquishment, a relinquishment of partnership, and so as it stands today, what we're bringing back to the council is just Mr. Shipley with regards to the proposal for the bait and tackle operator of the concessionaire.
Is the staff satisfied with what they worked out with Mr. Shipley as far as on that goes?
In terms of the standard concessionaires, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna oppose putting it to fray, and only because of the timing. We're getting close to Memorial Day weekend, and I don't want to see that, it's gonna take, would take time to get that thing put together and operating, and it's an investment to do so. There was already, I assume, a bid process to get to the point that we got now. There were already other people who were part of that bid, weren't there?
We conducted a request for proposal for this process, correct.
Yeah, so they already went through that, and I just don't, I don't, I think it would be a disservice to the city to push it off, because if we have to go to full, put out the bid again, you're talking a minimum of 60 days or longer than we're in. By the time we come through, it operated, it's late summer or midsummer, late summer. I just think that we should go with what we have, that we had other people already bid on it, and just to go ahead, if their staff is happy with it, I'm happy with it.
You know, I think my only concern with that, Steve, is, you know, you're talking about bonding and insurance of businesses that are gonna be operating on city property, and, you know, my biggest concern is that, looking at this proposal, it's a proposal that's, you know, quite frankly, void at this point, because it says it's gonna be a partnership with a business that's no longer being partnered with. And so, my concern is that you're asking me as a councilor to approve an RFP that's flawed from the beginning. And so I'm not sure how we rectify that without a report that says, hey, we're gonna be comfortable moving forward as an individual business and not as a joint venture.
Yeah, but I thought we had a, we don't have an actual agreement just for Shipley?
No, what's, what I'm asking for tonight in the staff report is approval to execute an agreement for concessionaire services with Mr. Shipley, so we would execute it after tonight's approval by the council.
So that's exactly my concern, Steve, is that, looking at this, the documents we have in front of us don't show that. They show a partnership between the two and how they're gonna operate intermittently.
Okay, again, I'm gonna come back to staff. Have they discussed with Mr. Shipley the operation, and are they satisfied with how he's gonna operate it? And do you understand what the terms, you're asking us to approve you to go forward with an agreement without having the pro forma agreement for us to look at. I think that's, that's, you know, what Chris is saying, and I can understand that. How can we get, do you guys have something to show us?
We have a standard concessionaire agreement that we use for all of our concessionaire services. It's a very kind of template concessionaire agreement, if you will, and so those terms are acceptable to staff and to both applicants within the RFP process.
I hear your concerns, Steve, and I think, you know, Mr. Shipley's gonna be a great operator out there, and I think if we just bring this item back for next council meeting with an individual RFP, a report stating that he's gonna be the individual running this business and it's not a joint partnership, then I think that would be appropriate.
It's not a problem. We can continue it to the next meeting and get a revised proposal, and just for council's own benefit, attach the pro forma. I want to make a comment, though, with regards to pro formas. We typically don't attach pro formas to staff reports. It's not because we don't have one, it's just we're asking for council to execute, or give us the approval to execute the agreement. But in this case, if there's a concern with it, we can bring it back so you can see the standard agreement attached as well.
I don't, if we're just doing a standard agreement, and we've already worked out what the terms are, what's our concern?
My concern is the business proposal before us is a business proposal for a joint venture, and that joint venture is no longer happening. So you're asking me to approve a business plan that I have no knowledge of, based on what Eric's seen.
And I think it's reasonable to ask for the two weeks and get it clarified. I think you're making a real good point, because on the preliminary reading, it sounds like the Firehouse Ribs was gonna be the food concessionaire, but Mr. Shipley certainly has some good qualifications from his bar and restaurant experience, and, you know, his, he knows what he's getting into, he's a San Clemente resident, but it would be great to have it spelled out, hours of operations. I'd also, to your point, I would like to know when he plans to open, because that space has been stripped to nothing.
Correct.
So the TI on that is gonna be, I'd like to know that as part of...
He's in the audience, if you want, he's raising his hand.
Can I ask a couple of questions, too? One thing that I'm concerned with, and I'm seeing it with the North Beach stand, too, is people have the ability, once we give them a concession license, to sell that business to other partners, and it seems like that has done us in several times, not just on the pier, but in North Beach. Can we change that policy for a concession? I mean, if somebody doesn't want to do it anymore, they should just go out, either go by the terms of your rent or your...
I think you could make that a condition of approval for any concession.
Or we can always add, just add the language to it that they are not transferable unless approved by city council, so that they can come back and give us another proposal and we decide, say, no.
I don't like to do that, because then it, you know, people come in and get a contract, they get it incentivized, and then they sell it off. And that's not, these are important to us, and that's why we're questioning this, it sounds like. The other question I had is whether, I couldn't tell whether there would be any deliveries from this concession stand. I don't think that is a good idea. There was also an offer of helping people or assisting them, teaching them how to fish. I don't know about liability, if this $160 insurance covers something like that. We should have someone, I don't think we've had anyone out there doing active fishing like that.
Bottom line is, there's a lot of questions that I think need to be clarified, and so...
What I'm wondering, though, is if the other people got to bid, if their bids were equally considered when this one had a partner in it.
So to your question, Mayor, so we did receive four proposals for the pier or end-of-pier concessionaire, and there was an evaluation committee that convened and evaluated and interviewed all of the proposals, proposers, and went over and had an opportunity for them to present their model, their business plan, and so forth. And so the committee, you know, brought forward the recommendations to staff, which I'm presenting to council tonight. We did have one vendor that withdrew from the RFP process, so we were down to three, and we were looking for, again, you know, someone that's qualified and provided, you know, the most appropriate use of the space. Since it's a fishing pier, the fishing element was one of the elements that Mr. Shipley's proposal stood out with, with staff and the evaluation committee. But with regards to all your comments, with regards to transportation and liability, insurance, all of those things, we can definitely address that when we bring it back to staff.
But I just want to clarify that the group interviewed Shipley by himself, not the partnership.
That's correct.
Okay, so he qualified individually.
Well, that's why I think if we bring this back in two weeks, it'll be, it'll be much easier.
Did he qualify individually, or, I'm not sure. The other concessions talked about how they would have to add equipment and things that they would do, and I don't think this one does that.
From my understanding, that Mr. Shipley would be providing both equipment and improvements to the concessionaire stand. And if, again, as council brings up these concerns, when we bring it back, we can make sure that all of that is articulated within his proposal or his revised proposal.
And I'd like to hear from him, since he's here in the audience, if he could have a few minutes.
So to answer some of your questions, as far as like a timeline, I've actually already purchased all the equipment. I've been inside, I know what needs to be done. I've already purchased the equipment, and I was hoping that things would go well tonight and be installed on Monday. I've, my living room is full of all kinds of fishing equipment that I've had delivered from a wholesaler. My spare bedroom is full of all kinds of things to sell. Today I went down to a t-shirt manufacturer and had that done, so I'm on schedule to open almost immediately. I understand if you guys put it off. I would ask that you don't. I'm not looking to sell this business, I'm looking to be the concessionaire and me to actually be the person out there running it. When I say helping the people fish, not necessarily like showing them how to throw it out there, but, you know, just being helpful that, you know, here's some different fishing knots, like I have a piece of paper that I can hand them, you know, that they can use, maybe suggesting, hey, listen, I like to use a number four hook. When fishing out here, I like to use, you know, squid to fish, not necessarily physically helping them, but, you know, just giving them some pointers.
And what's your menu once you subtract out the Firehouse Ribs?
I actually did submit a separate menu from Firehouse Ribs. The reason that we submitted it jointly is because I was told by a couple of citizens that the city wanted one concessionaire to run both locations, and so if I was wrong there, I was wrong, but I have a full menu already to go.
Is that pages 6L14 and 15 that says the pier grill menu?
Yes.
So that's stripped of all the Firehouse products?
Correct. Correct.
What equipment is in that building currently for you to serve food?
There's no, there's no equipment to serve food. There's a hood system in there that's fully operational. There is a two-base sink, there is a hand-washing sink, and a mop sink.
But no freezers or...
No.
Okay. So you couldn't open...
I have that all purchased and ready to be delivered this next Monday. I'm on schedule to do it. I was hoping that you guys would say yes, I could sign the lease and get it all in there. But I've, I've got it all, all brand-new equipment ready to go in.
What's about the, what did you, what's the pricing on what you've acquired for all the equipment you've paid for?
So the hard equipment is about $12,000 for, say, steel tables, refrigeration, all brand-new refrigeration, a fryer, flat-top grill. Then in addition, there's a lot of, you know, small wares I've probably done, about another $2,000 worth.
And what's your definition of off-season? The days you're gonna be closed my business?
Not June through September. So everything else.
So October to May? Okay.
And what is the startup time to, once you get installed, or you, once you sign a lease, how long before you can get installed and then? If it's not approved tonight, you have to delay the installation, so rescheduling and all that, what's the turnaround time?
So I can reschedule it, I mean, that's not a problem. But let's just say everything went well, and you guys said yes, and I was able to meet with the city manager the end of this week and sign everything. I was hoping to actually open on the 24th, so next week.
Gotcha.
Okay, so if we go off two weeks, you're, there won't be anything there for Memorial Day weekend?
No, 'cause, I mean, I, it, that's past Memorial Day weekend, so...
It's, we're cutting it too close anyway, I think, so...
We actually have an extra Tuesday this month. Is there, this is for a city clerk, or, you know, we have to meet on Monday for the budget. Is there any way to get what Councilmember Ham's asking for and deliberate on it Monday as part of that meeting?
We could issue a revised agenda if you want that.
We have the 72 hours of time. This is whether we can gather up all the information and put it out by Friday afternoon, Thursday.
You know, I guess the biggest thing is, this is a little unorthodox for how we do business in San Clemente. I mean, typically, if someone puts a proposal in, and it's joint venture between two separate businesses in town, and one of them's not gonna be involved. But Steve, if you want to put this one on you and move forward, and we're gonna hold you accountable to this one, then...
Yeah, well, the reason, the reason I'm thinking is because it was a joint venture, but it was always delineated that Mr. Shipley was gonna be the pier, and the other ones were gonna be North Beach, as far as what I understood when I went through this, so...
He was gonna be relying on, and that was gonna be the strength of the partnership, so that was the issue that I had also. I need to clarify what kind of business is being run out of, out of it, you know, because it sounded like it was turning more into a restaurant with what the other proposal was. And I have a concern with doing catering or deliveries out of here where you're delivering to someone's house. I just would like to have the agreement state all that.
Okay.
And what you intend to do as far as helping people fish. I also have a concern with, you're going to be selling, you said you're going to be selling fishing poles. Those tend to be quite expensive. And I'm not sure about our liability on if that is broken into. I don't believe we've ever had anything like that at the pier for sale.
So total in fishing equipment that I've purchased, including about 20 poles, crab traps and everything, is about $600. So the fishing poles-
So it's not a $600 fishing pole?
No, so I have some of those at home, just not for sale. So most of the fishing poles I was buying was anywhere between $9 and $12 wholesale. And just to answer your question about catering, I don't plan on doing any catering. There's, there's no way. It's such a small kitchen. And to have a delivery person pay for parking, walk down to the end of the pier and grab it, I don't-
No, I agree. That's why I wanted to make sure that we're not trying to do that in this. So are you walking that back?
I guess. I mean, you know, I understand Mr. Shipley's position, you know, he's expecting to move forward on this. But like I said, you know, my biggest concern is that it's a change in what is being proposed in front of me.
What about, and this would be for you, Mr. Sund, if, can we agendize it for Monday? Because it sounds like if everything was locked and loaded, as it seems to be, you would have been locked and loaded with your paperwork as well.
Correct. So a couple of things. Yes, we can agendize it. I just have to caution council. We're in kind of budget mode the rest of this week and it's Dark Friday. So a number of our resources are directed to getting the budget presentation to council on Monday. What council could do, and I'm trying to throw out solutions to the council to consider, is all of your concerns that are being voiced, indemnification, transportation, you know, single proposal. What we could do is basically get authority tonight to move forward contingent that those things are fulfilled. And then we could work with the vendor over the next week or so. I don't want to provide, I don't want to give a perception of expedited service in terms of trying to move things quickly. I want to make sure we do it right so that we get everything correctly done and execute an agreement. And then, you know, depending on when we get that done, he then has an executed lease and all of your needs are met and we can report back to you via a report or an email or something that effort. Or, you know, the council can defer to the next council meeting.
So I would like, if that option, if it can work, we can rely upon staff. We've established our concerns and rely upon staff. Just give them the direction to take care of it. Make sure that we have all that covered, that our vision is what is done, and then let Mr. Shipley go forward. I would just love to have that thing open for Memorial Day weekend.
Well, I just want to clarify that my concern's not with what staff's report was. It was with applicant's report. So I think staff's report was very clear and concise. It was the applicant that had some confusing items in his RFP.
We don't want any leeway, anything open that could be interpreted differently. And also, I would like to add that, that no other partners, you know, you can't sell this off to someone else and then leave the city hanging high and dry where you don't open because you couldn't find someone.
I don't think that's a problem.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that seems to be what's killed us in past years in looking at the past history of both concession stands.
Absolutely.
It kind of jumped out, so.
Non-transferable.
The agreement is with Mr. Shipley only.
Understood.
So Steve, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I want to make a, wait.
I'm sorry. Really quick, just to clarify, what, does the council have any wishes as it relates to the term of the agreement?
I'm comfortable with what staff's recommendation was.
What, you have the three years, the three-year extension?
We have the standard. I just want to make sure that we're clarifying all the issues before we move forward.
So I may, I- I would like the seasons spelled out, seasons and off-season, what, so there's no misunderstanding about the Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
And I'll make the motion that we, that we approve, we approve the bait and tackle concession under the conditions that staff is going to move forward. We're going to have a more concise and precise, detailed description provided by the concessionaire as to the hours of operation, what he's going to be managing out there as far as the food menu and the other items going to be out there. What is, what is months of operation are going to be. And confirm that there will be no delivery service. There'll be no catering service. And that the fishing tackle and things are of a minor nature for kids or things they just want to do out there. But we're not talking about a full pro tackle shop on the, on the end of the pier.
Something like no instructional services, that type of thing.
Right, right. And the fact that it's not transferable and that it's only to Mr. Shipley's for his operation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Swor, second by Hamm, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. It's an exciting part of our town.
Okay, item M. Chris, you pulled that one.
Item M. Amber. I know you've been very busy, but I didn't see a outline for when we could expect us to come back.
We did not provide an outline as part of that, given existing resources right now. We will get to it as quickly as we possibly can and probably utilize help from BB&amp;K as well on this endeavor to get it to planning commission.
Are we thinking this year or next year sometime?
This year.
Okay. Look at James, this year.
We're writing down this year.
Yes, thank you.
Are you moving the item?
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Hamm, second by Doncheck, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Item N.
I'm O. Did someone else pull N?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
LMO.
You said N, didn't you, Lori? And I followed right behind you. Oh. Well, you said, it was like LMN O.
No, just, no, yeah, no, just LMO.
So I'll be very brief. Assistant City Manager Eric Sund. So tonight before you, we have another approval for a lease agreement to operate the North Beach concession that had been vacated by Hardee's and has been vacated for quite some time. And this concessionaire that's before you went through the similar RFP process that we conducted for the end of pier. And so with that, I'll conclude staff report and address any questions or concerns the council may have.
Laura, you got questions? Oh, did you not pull O? Or did you pull?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, okay. Oh, what happened with the N? Did you pull N? No one pulled N?
We didn't, but the way you said it, we just kind of thought N was in there.
So I have two concerns. The first one, Eric, is, oh gosh, I can't remember. Right when I first got on council, we adopted a new ordinance for trash as it relates to businesses and the responsibility of individual businesses to clean or police their area of trash created by their business. And so I just want to ensure that this is being on the beach, that the concessionaire will be addressing that at the end of each day so that we, they don't have any of their trash left behind.
With that being said, we can definitely make sure that that's part of the service scope within the concessionaire agreement to maintain a clean premises surrounding the concessionaire stand. That shouldn't be a problem for the-
The other thing was, being that this concessionaire is, you know, has some vast experience running this type of business, it seems to me that one of the things you talked about is some morning service, right? That was on the menu?
Correct.
Is there any proposal I didn't see in here for signage on the beach trail or some sort of, you know, you know, a coffee stand on the beach trail or anything like that that he wants to do moving forward?
Not that I'm aware of, no sir.
Okay. So it hasn't been brought up in discussion?
No.
Interesting. Nothing near the train tracks?
No, this is just for the concessionaire of the North Beach concession, not the location.
Were you going to suggest that he should add signs to his business?
Well, that's what I was thinking. I mean, we had a, you know, a past operator had signage, I think an A-frame sign up near the beach trail that, you know, encouraged people to come down and get coffee and things of that nature.
That won't be something that we would promote or allow.
Oh, I was just kind of thinking the opposite, but.
I stand to the, I stand to the council, there'll be signage on the building that I'm sure that they're going to want to put, which is the burger shack on the tracks.
Yeah, well, I don't know if anybody else would share that excitement, but I think it's, I think, I thought it was a great idea before. You know, that location is pretty prime to have people get coffee in the morning and things of that nature.
Where are you talking about the sign?
So they used to do it, if I remember correctly, right at the railroad crossing. And it was just like a sandwich A-frame sign. It said, you know, coffee, bagels, donuts, whatever, mornings, hours of operation.
I would be happy to support Mr. Hamm's motion to let them add a sign at that location.
The only concern I have is that it's in the public right-of-way and we don't allow that.
Well, and that's why I want to bring it up, just to ensure that moving forward, you know, we have a policy for in place so that way we're not kind of caught off guard by it. And that way it addresses all of our concerns.
I'd actually defer to Cecilia from Community Development or Amber to discuss what we allow in public right-of-way as it relates to A-frames.
Uh-oh.
We don't allow them.
Yeah, and then I can imagine other restaurants in town wanting the same type of-
In the middle of the sidewalk.
Exception.
Mayor Ward's absolutely right. We actually don't allow them in the public right-of-way and adhere to that on Del Mar. We've ran into that request a number of times. And as long as it's out of the public right-of-way as the way the code currently is written, you're fine.
I've seen people trip over them and especially in that area. Looking at the ocean may not realize that there's something there that probably shouldn't be in the middle of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Just because they're so low. You know, if you're following someone in front of you, you're not, if they pass at the last minute, you don't realize it's there.
Yeah, I don't recall exactly, but it's a wide crossing there. And it seemed like it worked before and I just want to make sure that, you know, that's-
If there's a will of the council to allow for something like that, we'll work with Community Development to see if we can find a location that would be allowable.
Or put it on the concessionaire if there's something, because your point is that it's a great amenity for-
Try to invite people.
Yeah, and so we're open to hearing their ideas.
Correct. We'll work with the concessionaire and if there's any solutions that we can reach, we'll communicate back to the council as we move forward.
And then my, my last concern with this, with this RFP before we move on is just that hours of operation and ensuring that we're not going to allow the concessionaire to have any type of special events permit or anything like that above and beyond what we do for anybody else.
Understood.
I have a question then. You're done?
Yeah.
Okay. Eric, we, I think we talked earlier about rentals. Are we going to pull that out of this?
What we're focusing on with the concessionaire is just to focus on concessionaire food services. This location has been vacated for quite some time. And I think that's the primary goal, is bringing back concessionaire food services and getting that foothold established. And so rentals were not something that we wanted to pursue at this time.
Well, there's a mention of water toys, sand toys, sweatshirts, things like that. So we're going to pull that out?
That is correct.
Okay, so that was one concern. The other one was they talked about doing food trays and picnics for 10 to 15 people, school groups, but it sounds like maybe, you know, there might be a lot of deliveries to there. Where is the food going to be made at the other Ruby's and brought over?
To my knowledge, no, that is not associated with that location. They'll be basically upgrading the existing kitchen space, which is not a very, it's a good-sized kitchen space. And so they just need some updated equipment where the food preparation will occur on-site. Obviously, once Health Department has approved it.
Okay, so we shouldn't see, there isn't a tie to another business where they're going to be bringing stuff?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, that's a concern. The other one is, again, not selling it to someone else. This is non-transferable.
We'll apply the same more or less parameters you put on the other concessionaire agreement that you've already approved.
Okay, and there's one last. I'm sorry. This is the last question. Something happens to this building and we have this agreement, are we obligated to put in a new building? Or is the-
No, we'd have to work with the concessionaire in terms of, you know, if we were to have to close the building because it becomes an unsafe, you know, based on erosion of sand and so forth, which has been an ongoing issue at North Beach as we're all aware of. We'd have to work with the concessionaire if we were going to have to, I'll call it, red-tag the building. Because obviously with any concessionaire, they're going to make some capital investments related to it. And so any standard concessious agreement has that, I'll say, buyout clause that could be negotiated in terms of recouping what they put into the property. So that would be something that the city would have to engage upon if that was the case.
Is there any way to change that agreement?
We can change any agreement. It's just a question of whether the concessionaire would agree to those changes. And so if the council wanted to direct us to not have that clause in there, we would go back to the concessionaire and talk to them to see if it's something that they're open to.
And this is a three-year?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm worried.
Do we have insurance on the building?
We do, but there are some concerns that relate to the location and the proximity to the ocean that play into the role of the insurance. And so, you know, that would be, wouldn't be as black as and white as one would hope with regards to that.
Should we add any writing that we wouldn't be looking at adding a building that's bigger than this? Like, say, we're going to be adding a full restaurant to the beach anytime?
I think we definitely could, but keep in mind if the building was to be washed away via tsunami, we are only approved for the footprint that we were approved for via coastal. So we have no rights to build bigger than what was there without going back to coastal.
I was just concerned that a person of this caliber would want to open something this small and whether they're trying to get in knowing that, you know, there could be a big building down the road.
That hasn't been brought to our attention and we have no intentions of expanding. I think we want to leave it the way it is.
While I got you on the hook, Eric, when are we coming back with the RFP for the T Street concessionaire?
That'll be something that we'll be addressing in the capital improvement budget that will be brought forth with you on the 22nd. And based on what the council does, then we can turn around and begin that process for the RFP.
Got it. And is this, this concessionaire isn't prepared to open on Memorial Day, are they?
No, but they're anxious to open up as soon as possible as well because as indicated, they want to be operating for the summer months and they see a lot of potential there. And so from staff, I've heard that they are ready to move expeditiously to get it opened.
Have you tasted these proprietary shakes they're talking about?
I have not made any samplings of food to date.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Does you want a special deal that you get a full, you know?
We should have a card.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so you're moving the item then with our concerns that we-
That is correct, Mayor.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll move item O with the discussed issues included.
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Doncheck, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant and appellant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. This evening's public hearing is to consider an appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of a 1,176 square foot second-story addition to a legal non-conforming residence at 404 South La Esperanza.
And Cliff, before you start, could you explain why this went from zoning to council without stopping at design review or planning commission on the way?
Sure. So this is a request for a minor architectural permit per the ordinance for, in addition to a non-conforming home. That goes from a review of staff directly to the zoning administrator. That's a streamlined review process. So, good evening. I'm Cliff Jones. The, I'm not the project planner. Kurt Corey is the project planner. But I'm presenting for Kurt. Unfortunately, he had a family obligation this evening. This is an appeal of minor architectural permit 16-370 and minor exception permit 16-371, which, as you've seen in your staff report, was approved by the zoning administrator on March 22nd of this year. At the zoning administrator meeting, a number of neighbors expressed some concerns, citing concerns about neighborhood compatibility, primarily concerns with regards to height. The proposed height of the structure is 23 feet and the zoning ordinance does allow for a maximum height of 25 feet. There were concerns about loss of view, private view impacts. And as the council's aware, the city doesn't have any provisions for protecting private views. There was concerns cited about soil stability. And it should be noted that soil stability is required to be demonstrated at time of building permit application, not at discretionary view application. The reason why the minor architectural permit is needed is because this is an addition to a non-conforming home. The home's non-conforming because of setbacks. And the reason why a minor exception permit is needed is because the applicant is proposing an addition that maintains a two-inch left-side encroachment into the required setback. The reason why they're maintaining that two-inch setback, according to the applicant, is the cost to move the second-floor addition over by two inches to meet the required setback would be quite costly to do so. It should also be noted that it's not uncommon for homes constructed in this era, this home was constructed in 1963, to have non-conforming setbacks. And that's because the, there wasn't quite accurate technology tools such as lasers that were readily available at that time of construction. readily available at that time of construction. The zoning administrator did determine that the proposal to encroach two inches into the required side yard setback will not be detrimental to the general public or adjacent properties, and therefore approve the project. And in conclusion, staff and the zoning administrator recommend that the city council approve the project as proposed. That concludes staff's presentation.
Do you have a slide for us on this?
I have an aerial that I can show. And the applicant does...
Would it show us which side we're speaking of?
Yes.
Okay, that would be helpful.
And the applicant also has a presentation that they wanted to go over.
Can you point out which side is the...
Two inches?
Is two inches?
Yes. It is on this left side here. When you're looking at the property from the street, it's on the left side. So that would be in this location here.
Oh, it isn't. Okay. Yeah, it's confusing because of the way the house is situated.
Correct.
And can I ask one more question? What percentage is it that they can add on to a house, a non-conforming structure, before it triggers conformance?
Excellent question. 50%.
So they're right under 49?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question. So do you want to hear from, we have several cards?
Thank you.
All right. We have several speakers. First speaker is Keith Howington.
Maybe, could we have the applicant's presentation first?
Yes, that's a good idea. Applicant first. Did you fill out a card?
I did, yes.
Oh, I see your name. Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Eric Quaid. I am the owner, my wife and I, of 404 La Esperanza. Clicker, or is it? Okay. So 404, I grew up in San Clemente. I am a resident of it currently right now. You know, I grew up, I went to Oldie Hanson High School, went to Shorecliffs Junior High, went to San Clemente High. San Clemente has been a part of my life for, you know, since the day I was born. I've left San Clemente and always wanted to make my way back. You know, as I made my way back, I've now been able to find a home that literally is on the same street as my parents in the city, in the street that I grew up with. My parents are right next door. They're on 404. So for us, you know, my wife and I and the kids, to be able to buy a house right next door to my parents has just been, I mean, a dream. They've lived in that house for over 40 years, which I grew up in. And we now are looking to have a place to be able to care for them as they get into their golden years. And we look forward to be able to actually have a place for our growing family as well, to be able to increase with some space. We have always wanted a safe, quiet place to raise our family. My kid's grown up next to their grandparents. You can't ask for anything more than that. I mean, that's priceless to be able to walk next door. We want nothing more than to be able to enhance this neighborhood, add property value, and just beautify the street. I mean, it's a very special street to me very personally, and I don't want anything to be able to harm it. Obviously, I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure that we can beautify it. Throughout the house, or throughout the neighborhood and the hill, we've got lots of two-story. We even have a few three-story homes in the area. What's really at question here is just the height limit for the, or well, the height limit is actually going to be eight feet, three inches above the existing structure today. So it's not, you know, a 20 or 30-foot, you know, huge addition. It's going to be eight feet, three inches above, which is going to be a total of 23 feet. Still within the 25-feet height limit within the neighborhood. We didn't push the limit. We didn't go above. We didn't, you know, try to even get close to it. We just want to be able to provide a second story to give us a little extra space here for the growing family. We have the support of both of our side neighbors. So 404 and 406 have both approved of our advances with the addition. There is talk of McMansioning. And if you look at, at a quick little view here, you can see, I know it's really small, but if you look at the square footage of the homes in the area, the average is 3,448. We're asking to put on 3,549, which is only 100 square feet difference from just the median average home size. I mean, on the neighborhood, we've got 6,000 and 7,000 square-foot homes. So what I'm just asking is, you know, please look at the letter of the law here. Ever since the beginning of this, and it's been, you know, close to 20 months that we've owned the property and started this process, we have followed the letter of the law. And everything that's been asked of us, we've moved forward with. The city planning members have already made their approval and have agreed to move forward before the appeal was submitted. And it really is just, it's back to the two inches deficient. And back in 1963, obviously, I know it was stated before, but there were no lasers. There were no, you know, measurements, still hand tape. So the deficiency is really just based on, you know, the approval of the hand tapes. And the last little piece here is that the driveway, obviously, the setback with the driveway is what it is. But it's been that way ever since 1963, when it was approved. It's been in compliance since the day it was built. Obviously, it is a wraparound driveway, so there is no concern with being able to have cars standing outside of the driveway that would overhang into the city walkway. So the big piece I just want to kind of stress here is that, you know, I started my life on this street, and I really want to spend the rest of my life there as well. And respectfully, we'd love to be able to request that the city council approve the planning commission's previous approval to move forward with our plans. Thank you.
Okay, so this is where I'm confused. We don't have an attachment to do with the planning commission. So Cliff, can you walk us through who's seen it?
Yes. Yeah, actually, Mr. Quaid, it's the zoning administrator is actually the approving body. So the planning commission did not approve this.
Because I read the report, and there wasn't a plan, because I take their input very seriously, which is why my question, like, wait a minute, where is it? Okay.
Yes. Any other questions?
That's it. Thank you very much. We have several speakers. Keith Howington, Susan Howington, Patricia Lamont. Go ahead and step up to the microphone.
I'm the guy that wrote the, I'm the appeal guy. Can I ask?
What is your name?
David Butner.
Okay. And you would like to go first?
That's right.
Okay, I will allow that. So after Mr. Butner will be Keith Howington, followed by Susan Howington.
Okay, am I on? Yeah, I'm Dave Butner. My wife Anne is here. We've been residents of San Clemente since 2001. First of all, when I found out I was going to do this, I dug out an old copy of PowerPoint. And I thought I would use that tonight. I'm glad my Microsoft Word works, because for PowerPoint, I had a note that I'm supposed to use Microsoft 3.0. That's their operating system. So I'm about 20 years behind on that. So I couldn't get it going, so I did use Microsoft Word. And I think that's going to work. I'm here to appeal the approval for that, for those two permits. And could I see the next? Now, that's me, that's my property down below. You see the chair and the umbrella? Took that yesterday. The wind had just started to kick up. Second later, that umbrella was on the ground. But anyway, about halfway up, you see a little brown line, and that's where the property line is. And if you could bring the picture down a little bit, so you could see the house behind? That's where they're going to put a second story. That's where they want to do that. Now, to me, that's going to be a huge imposition. It's going to ruin our privacy. We like to have guests over, and lots of things happen back there. It's not going to be able, we're not going to be able to do that now. Can you see the next one, please? So what we did was went through the, I think, could you back up a little, please? Yeah, yeah, that's it. I went through that agenda report where you folks did the analysis. And there are a number of things that are not quite right. It says it does not create adverse massing impacts. Well, if you remember from the picture, if you put two stories on, you're going to have a huge massing impact. The second story is setback over 57 feet from the, from the street, I believe. But it's only 20 feet from my property. And, but again, we weren't, we weren't part of the equation here. Could you move that down a little bit now? It preserves the one-story element. And how do two stories preserve a one-story element? Again, this is a direct quote from what you folks analyzed. Next one down, please. This is the resolution section. There's a quote, "The building scale and massing is in character and is compatible with adjacent properties." Well, if you go out and count, there's 15 houses in a row that are one-story before you get to a two-story house. Now, how could that be in character? So I think that's a grave error. The project would improve the appearance of the house and the neighborhood? No. It's going to be, to me, it's going to be a monstrosity. So I don't know how it can come out that way. Next one, please. And this is what Mr. Quaid just said. This is the letter he sent you folks. And there's some things in there that I disagree with. He said both next-door neighbors are in support. Well, there's an accounting issue here, because there are actually three next-door neighbors. Number one is mom and dad, and of course, they were going to agree. Number two, I understand, is a renter. But three, he never asked us. He never got our opinion on that. Second point, it will only add eight feet, three inches. But to us, that's huge. I mean, doubling the height. We want, this is the one I like. We want nothing more than to enhance the neighborhood and add property value to our beautiful street. What he's doing is he's, and I know that blocking a view is not your concern, but in the process of blocking the views from the people on the other side of the street, he's diminishing the value of their property. And in the same time, he's going to enhance the value of his property. And when we bought the house, we talked to our real estate agent. And I noticed there's a whole lot of two-story houses on another street over. I said, could that happen here? And she said, no, the San Clemente people aren't that way. They're very, very concerned about the view. We know you pay a premium price. And so everybody respects that. Now, here's a situation where that's not the case. Finally, across the street, he said it's a three-story home. I went up and I counted. I could only count two. I asked the guy that owns it, Keith, if he's got a wine cellar. We didn't see. And no, it's just two stories. So anyway, this whole thing is fraught with errors, and a decision was made to approve on faulty information. So my request is this whole thing be not approved. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you very much. Mr. Howington, Susan Howington, followed by Patricia Lamont.
Good evening. I'm Keith Howington. I'm the owner of the supposed three-story house, which is, in fact, only two stories. There was a letter sent to the city council that I'd like to address some of the erroneous information, because I think it behooves you to understand what the opposing side would consider to be correct. My house is the one that he claims is 39 feet away from his house. I'm across the street on Esperanza. It is only two stories. The square footage is wrong. I only have two and a half baths. And my house, being two stories, is up against an 80-foot slope right behind me. And I have no adjacent neighbors. I'm on a corner, triangle-shaped property.
What's your, at 401?
I'm at 400 Avenida Arlina.
Okay.
So I'm right in the corner of Arlina and Esperanza, the triangular-shaped house right there. Dave already mentioned the neighbors' support. Obviously, we're questioning that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, is there are 21 other neighbors in this direct neighborhood, many of them are here tonight in support, who are totally against this addition as well. One of the real issues that I have is the statements in regards to the square footage that he made in the letter to the city council. He claims that the neighborhood is 3,448 feet is the average square footage in the house. We did our own analysis of 21 houses directly around this house, which I think is a whole lot more applicable than some of the houses he claims are 7,000 square foot, which are well over half a mile away from this house. So a bit of cherry-picking going on. Our calculation is, is that the 21 surrounding homes, the average square footage is 2,449 feet. When you look at him wanting to build a 3,549-square-foot total house with this addition on it, it becomes by far the largest house in the neighborhood. Not acceptable. And I'm wondering why so much erroneous data would be provided to the city council. I don't, I don't understand. So I wanted to share that, wanted to share that with you as well. Granted, he may have grown up on Esperanza, but I don't believe he's been in the neighborhood for 20 years. They bought this house in November 2015. Nobody lives in this house. It's basically empty today. And the last thing I would like to state is, and I quote, "I probably know more about La Esperanza than anyone else," unquote. That's a direct quote from Eric Quaid in the letter that he sent to the city council. Well, based on the data he's provided to the city council, I'm going to be the first to disagree with his level of knowledge of our neighborhood. And I sincerely ask the city council to consider all the points heard here tonight, and reject the requested permits in the best interests of our neighborhood and the city of San Clemente. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Susan Howington, followed by Patricia Lamont.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Councilman Chris Hamm, nice to see you. My husband and I both voted for you, so it's nice to see you in action. And thank you for the protection of San Clemente in regards to the document that was previously discussed about the bake shop. I think that was a wise objection, and notice for sensitivity. I would like to just quote, I'm going to stand on my tippy-toes here so that I can be heard. I want to quote the mission statement of the city, and that is guiding development to ensure responsible growth while preserving and enhancing our village character, unique environment, and natural amenities. I know that there have been rulings for homeowners to allow them to build a second story, that there's been almost a hands-off, an owner can do what they will with a property within the limits. However, even against the collective views of neighbors and people that are impacted by it. And I would like to ask the question, if that is the view of this city council? We vote for you. The people collectively vote for you. We'd like for you to take the view of the collective whole, the neighbors around 404 La Esperanza. We're all here. We've all done a lot of work, a lot of analysis, a lot of knowledge collection. We care about our neighborhood. We truly do. We live there. We love everything about it. And we would like to know that you would make a decision based on our collective benefit versus the benefit of just one. So thank you very much.
May I bring this down? Hi, my name is Pat Lamont, and I'm not a good speaker. I've only lived here in San Clemente for 40-plus years. I lived directly above the Quaid property. I'll just say, it's going to wipe out my view of the pier, they're putting a second story. But I know that the city's not involved in protecting views. As a matter of fact, you do a very good job being loyal to not protecting views. So I'm going to be, I'm going to ask you to be loyal to the law. That two inches matters, whether they put the second story or not. And they, the side, the side yard does not comply with the city, with the city law. The mistake was made, but why compound it by approving a second story? It's going to affect so many people. I just ask that you consider the fact that the rule of law matters. And those two inches are very important to me and to all of us sitting here. So please, it was the city's law. Follow it. Enforce that law, please. Thank you.
Anne Butner, followed by Thomas Witton. And I apologize if I did not say your name correctly.
You did. Anne Butner. Hello, everybody. I'm Anne Butner, and I have a few concerns also about this project. The Quaid letter that other people have talked about mentions the fact that their neighbors on either side are in support of the renovation. That may be true, but we are the neighbors below. And our property line is seven feet from their deck wall, and no one asked us to...
from their deck wall, and no one asked us about it, probably because it will be a huge eyesore in our backyard, as you saw from the picture a few minutes ago. And we will have a total loss of our privacy, which we enjoyed for 15 years. Number three, it will increase their property values, I'm afraid, and decrease ours. I might add that our other neighbors, who have already spoken close by, will lose their views also because of this structure. Number two, as I said, we are seven feet away from them, and our other concern is slope stability. I know the city would not sign off on any project that might be detrimental to us in the future. No one wants that liability. But in the very local area of the surrounding homes, we have had one, two, three, four, five, six houses that needed to have caissons, that we know of. With the added weight of their renovation being an issue, they would have no rooms if they needed to put caissons in, not in seven feet, to maintain... Not to mention that the damage would occur to our property. Lastly, so they gain property value at our expense, and we lose property value. Something is not right about that. Thank you for your time.
My name is Tom Whitten. I'm an interested neighbor. I'm interested in San Clemente. I have mentioned in the zoning, or at least in the other meeting, that basically that this business of McMansions happening, because we've seen that there's minor variance here, minor variance there, just okay, that's okay, this is okay, that's okay. Then there's a lot of them, and then there's more of them, because it's so many of them anyway, what the hell, might not have more of them. So I think that the willy-nilly just approving of minor exceptions and minor architectural variances is not the way that this should be handled. I mean, true that there were mistakes made in the past, and true that there are... It's only two inches. But as Mrs. Lamont said, those two inches could be worth miles when it comes to the quality of life and have a major impact on the quality of life of the people that live there. So if we were doing an environmental impact on how it affects the neighbors and how it affects the people, while the Quaids will benefit from it, and I would support exactly what they think that they would like to do with their property, and they have property rights, the adjourning and neighboring neighbors also have property rights that allow them to share their... Live there and to have the enjoyment and peace of their property, and loss of privacy from an overwhelming structure, and also losing their views, which is basically going to affect a lot of people's quality of life. I think those are major issues to not allow encroachments on a willy-nilly basis. So I just would like to appeal to the council not to support those minor exception and minor architectural variations. Thank you.
Okay, that was our last speaker. Cliff, can you come back up?
I'll close the public hearing.
Oh. I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Joanne. Does anyone have any questions? Would you... Do you?
Yeah, Cliff, last gentleman just spoke about environmental impact report on houses. You wanna talk about that for a minute?
Sure. So this type of project is by... For environmental purposes, since this is a developed lot, there's an existing structure. There's actually an exemption under state law that allows for, in addition to a existing home, to be exempt from sequel review. This falls under that type of exemption. It's a pretty common type of addition that we see to a home. Thank you.
Talk to us a little more about the two inches. Is there a remedy for that, where there's still a project, but the two inches?
That's with regards to the minor exception permit. The alternative would be to have the applicant do their second-story addition, two inches in, and it's more costly for them to do so. May require them to thicken up walls to do structural support of the addition above. So...
So the first floor is what it is? It would just be a two inch...
Yeah. And one thing of important to note for the council is that the reason why this application is before the... Well, the council at this point, the reason why is before the zoning administrator, is because of those two inches and the non-conforming setback in the front. Had this been a application for a new structure, the 20-foot front yard setback, six-foot sides, 10-foot rear, this would not be before a decision-making body. And staff did do a brief calculation and determined that, based upon the size of the lot, if for a one-story building maxed out at the max lot coverage setbacks, you could potentially have a close to a 3,500-square-foot home at one story. Yeah, at a second story, that does double that size. Just something to consider when the city council is doing their analysis. Thank you.
So if I understand correctly, it's because of the two inches that it isn't already signed off and done?
The two inches is one component. We're talking two inches on one side, one inch on another, and then the front yard setback for the garage. So those are the non-conforming elements, and that's why it is before the city council.
Can you speak to the comment about that there isn't enough room remaining if they had to put caissons in if there was a loss of the slope?
I... Quite frankly, I don't understand that comment, but as I mentioned previously, slope stability would have to be proven at time of building permit. At discretionary review, it's typical for us to condition that later on and have that be something where they actually hire a structural person to go and actually provide that documentation, those plans that show that structural will be met.
I think I saw there might be a soils test required. Is that part of that?
That's correct, yeah. There'd be soils report.
And remind me, this street, what track is this? What's it called?
Frankly, I don't know. I wasn't the original project planner, so I don't know.
Can you help me? Because I was looking for that.
I don't know.
I don't know. I just...
1963.
I drove it tonight. I drove through there tonight.
What's the nearest?
It's just really just...
It's the City Hall district.
It's right up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a couple blocks from there.
Okay.
Literally, you look out the window and see it.
So has anyone looked into... I think these homes were built without rebar in the foundation. In the... They're on a slab, correct?
Not all of them.
Not all of them? But I think there is some question on this track that's above us?
It's a bad... It's not bad. It's a real geological situation.
Okay, well, I just wanna know...
Unfortunately, I don't have that information. Our engineering division might have some of that, but unfortunately, I just don't have that information.
Okay. Because when I was looking at this, I was looking for a track, because I really wanted to know that, the condition of the house. This does seem exceptionally close to the edge of the slope. So what is the setback? I have the plans right here, but where... What is the existing house now from the back? That's what I couldn't... I could not tell.
You know, I'd like to defer to the applicant on that.
If I get to the plans, I can show you. We're not going anywhere even closer to the slope.
No, I'm just talking about the picture that we saw of the house below, this house. It looks like it's close to the back of the slope.
And what's the rear yard setback, is your question?
Right. Didn't you figure that out?
Was there... How about this? Was there any indication that their setback from the back fencing was not to code?
That's what I couldn't tell.
No, it's... The code requirement's 10-foot. You can see the outlined setback requirement and how the home is located within that area.
Can you tell? I couldn't find it.
It's not a variance. In other words, the setback is a code.
Okay. Yeah, the plans, it's odd that they don't seem to say what the setback's supposed to be and where the house is at. But it does... You know, you only talk about that it's off on the sides and the front.
It's the only deficiency.
Yeah, that's correct. As you can see on the plans, the outline of the 10-foot setback requirement, and you can see that the home as existing is within that area there, along the rear.
Okay. Talk to me about the upper deck from, I believe it's a master bedroom. Is that deck the level that it's coming out? Are they using the lower deck to justify how much that deck comes off the house?
You know, because I'm not the project planner, I don't have that history. All I could tell you is what is shown here on the plans. If I can defer to the applicant, perhaps provide some additional context.
And I'm sorry, the question was on the upper deck.
The upper deck?
Yes.
Are you using the lower deck, how far out it goes, to justify how far back that upper deck goes?
No. So it's... The upper deck is not going out the full distance of the existing deck today. It's actually set back.
Okay. How far off the ground is the deck that's on the bottom? How far off the ground? Is it on the ground? A foot off the ground?
The existing today is already on the ground.
Okay. So Cliff, correct me if I'm wrong, but on a deck like that, it could go... If it's on the ground, it could go up to the property line, pretty much, couldn't it?
That's correct.
Okay. So my concern is the deck that's above that area. I am concerned with that deck, because it is up in the air, that it meets the setbacks of this structure with the encroachments that they already have.
It's not even up to the...
That's the deck right there, the second story.
Yeah, correct.
So if you're looking at the plans, you can see there's a notation, the four-foot, four inches from the existing line there, and there's another area below that that shows that deck area that is hashed. And that's... I'm looking at...
What page?
The roof plan.
Oh, you're looking at the roof plan.
Sheet T. It's the site and roof plan. Sheet T.
So that is gonna be the deck right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you gotta...
You know, I thought this was gonna be easier than this.
James, can I highlight the area?
This is... Make it easy.
Right there.
Okay, so say that again.
It's a small deck.
About the deck.
So you can see that that's the second-level deck area, that area that's shaded in blue that I drew on those plans. And you can see that's well within the setback area.
Setback was on the line.
How does the encroachment, though, on that one... You said there was an encroachment on the other side. So is it an inch, or is it two inches on...
On the right side, it's a one-inch encroachment. So you can see that it's 5'11" on the right side, and then on the left side, it's 5'10" inches.
So we're being asked to okay it with the encroachments that it has. My one concern was that upper deck... And we don't consider massing for places behind. We only considered it from the front, from the street view, correct?
Yeah, as the staff report with the analysis that was provided to you, that's correct.
Is that standard, how we evaluate?
Yeah, the concern was massing impacts. Typically, when people are concerned about massing impacts, it's usually from the front of the property. And what was being said here is that approximately it's 50 feet back to where that encroachment area is. And so when you're looking at the majority of the residents, it primarily appears first a single story in the front, and then jumps up to a two-story element. So that's essentially what the analysis and the staff report was concluding. And that, of course, was from La Esperanza.
Okay. That was my question, is on the deck. I couldn't tell, but I thought I saw something in the report that was kinda justifying that upper deck by what was the lower deck, saying this was within the area of the lower deck, which we don't even know if that is permitted, but it's still within the setbacks.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That was my question.
I'll go first. Are there other questions?
No.
Okay. So this is one of the hardest jobs we have on city council, is working through neighborhood issues. We had a situation like this in the Riviera recently. We had one of these before that on Caie Valencia. And the irony is, these are all some of our best neighborhoods, where the neighbors really are neighborly, and I feel that way about your neighborhood as well. And so it makes it tough for someone who wants to do improvements to know that they've got that kind of tension. So it's tough, because you bought there because it's neighborhood that you love. I'm inclined to think about this in terms of property rights and uphold staff's approval on this, because the one thing I look for in situations like this is compromise or alternatives. And I didn't hear anything from the opposition about anything that would be suitable in terms of satisfaction to the neighbors, short of no project at all. And nor did I hear from staff any suggestions about if this weren't done, or if this remedy were achieved, or if we had, you know, this compromise. So... And then I'm also... We have this streamlined review process for a reason, and it's a very high bar for applicants. And so if a project makes that bar, there's a reason we have the streamlined approval. So even though I hear the frustration, I have lived it in my own neighborhood, I'm inclined to support staff's point of view on this particular property.
Chris?
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So let me just say that thank you to the residents for coming out and voicing your opinions and your concerns on this. One of the biggest issues for me, Lori brought up, the Riviera district that we had, I think, last year. And they had a set of CCNRs that regulated height requirements. And so I was staunch believer in maintaining those height requirements as set forth by CCNRs. My personal philosophy in San Clemente is that I think 25 feet for a two-story is utterly ridiculous. I think that's too much. And I think as a community, we need to make that change. Fortunately, I don't think it's fair to make that change after someone's already purchased a home and gone through planning. That being said, I share Mr. Butner's concerns. My neighbor is very similar to yours. I live on a slope, and their single-story house looks directly into my backyard. Fortunately, I am friendly with those neighbors, so it works out. But I have had neighbors in the past where it didn't work out so well. My one concern where I see a compromise, which is, quite frankly, is gonna be very difficult for Mr. Quaid, but I'm gonna support it anyways, the two-inch setback on the second story. When I drive around southwest San Clemente and the east side, I see two-story homes that are either wider on the second story or narrower on the second story because of this issue. So it has a precedent. It has been done before. I understand it. It's an additional hardship, but rules are rules. I will say, Mr. Quaid, I appreciate you looking at this from the perspective that you did not going a full 25 feet. If I was your neighbor, I would appreciate that as well. So I hope you folks can see, he didn't max out what his ability was. So with that, I'm gonna support moving forward with a two-inch and one-inch setback on each side and approve it with that condition.
I think I would concur with what you're saying on that, because we're allowing him to max out, they're going up 49%, and they're... But they're going into those setbacks. I would like to add that if it was me and I was building this house, I would not put that upper deck right there in that corner, because for you, it's going to be close to the people behind you also. Your patio and everything seems to be kind of on the side. Your house is in an L. I would move it over to there. And you still see the ocean, right? Because you're on the side, and maybe it can go out a little further. I don't know. But to me, that is a good compromise for your neighbors. And I just would think for you two, because I'm thinking about me. I live in southwest. I'm on a back deck overlooking a canyon, and I've got my neighbors right next to me, and they're on their deck, too. And there's times where I just go in my house because I feel like I shouldn't be out there, because we're just trying to give each other privacy. So that would be my suggestion, if you could implement that. I think you would make a better neighborhood. And maybe it's better for you two. I don't know. I know you wanna see the ocean, but I just... That back corner is just really close. But this is just a suggestion. But I think I'm gonna agree with the setbacks also. They're just... It's minor, but it can be done. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I took some time out to drive up there, so I wanted to make sure I...
Yeah, and I took some time out to drive up there. So I wanted to make sure I saw everything. And there is, it's a mixed area. And there's two stories mixed in, there's some areas with the setback as far as the second story is pushed back on the top. There were some that were just all up front. And some that looked like three stories that might not have been, it's just the way that the bottoms looked. So, and I'm also a firm believer in property rights. We have our laws for the way they are. We don't, we can't change law in midstream. It's not fair to anybody to do so. I'm personally not offended by two and one inches, but I'm not going to fight it. I understand it's going to be an additional design conditions and difficulty as far as structure goes inside, but it can be worked around to accomplish that. And so I'm going to support it with, as is being recommended.
So was that a motion that you made?
So I'll make a motion that we approve it with the modification that we do a two-inch setback and a one-inch setback on the second story. And that we allow the possibility to make the changes to the deck necessary, and hopefully the applicant sees fit that that's the way to go. But if they choose not to, then-
And they don't have to come back if staff-
There is no requirement to come back.
To the design and all that.
Is that clear, Cliff?
And I just, it is doable, what we're asking, this two-inch, one-inch adjustment. I thought I understood you said it was possible.
Well, I know it's more costly. I don't know what the, those costs are. But I do know it'd be more costly to the applicant. But essentially, what you're recommending is approval of the minor architectural permit, and in a sense, denying the minor exception permit, because the minor exception permit is to continue that two-inch-
Sure.
Okay.
Encroachment. That's what I'm hearing from the council.
I'll second it.
Oh, I gotta read it for Joanne. So a move that we adopt Resolution Number 17-12 entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente Approving Minor Architectural Permit 16-370, with a potential deck change, as mentioned by Mayor Ward, at the request, or at the approval of the applicant. And that we deny the minor exception permit 16-371 at Quaid Residence, a request to consider an expansion of illegal non-conforming residents located at 404 South Lost Bronza. And just to clarify that, it's for the two-inch setback on the south side and the one-inch setback on the north side.
Second?
Motion by Hamm, second by Duncheck, all in favor?
Oh, Mayor, sorry, just to clarify, there's a resolution. So the provisions relating to the minor exception permit will just be disregarded when the rest is adopted. I think that's what the motion was.
Okay, that was just a clarifying point, yeah.
To deny the second part. Okay, thank you.
And then, the other thing I'm going to ask, and I'm going to ask it seriously, construction is never a good neighbor. Make every effort to communicate with your neighbors on the days when you're going to have equipment starting at 7:00 in the morning, or there's going to be something going on that might, you know, and if you know in advance, in case somebody's got a party planned, but you're going to be drilling and jackhammering, just really work hard to let your neighbors know.
But I wanted to say, I appreciate everyone showing up for this. It is really hard for us to do this. And I think we take some of our personal experience, living so close together. But if, you know, you can make those changes, if it works out for you, great. I just want you to think about it, because for me, I feel really closed in when I'm on my deck. So I thought that might be nice for you, but just consider it. So I appreciate you all coming in.
Can you take a vote?
Oh, I thought I did say that.
He interrupted us during, before he voted.
Oh, it was Scott, that's right.
You were the only one who said aye.
We didn't take it. So motion by Hamm, second by Duncheck, all in favor?
Aye.
Now passes 4-0.
And ladies and gentlemen, before you step off, you know, I've always been, I meant what I said about the 25-foot height limit. And if there's an opportunity for a community action to change that, I think that'd be a great thing, something that I would support. But it's got to come from the community. It can't just be from, you know, five of us up here. So something to think about for the future. Thank you.
Okay, Joanne, number eight.
Next is a report from the Deputy Public Works Director concerning a contract award providing for visual simulations of potential toll road alignments.
Good evening, Mayor Ward and members of the council. Tom Bonniget. Yeah. I'll pause for a moment.
Yeah, we'll let everyone clear up. So it was nice, you were on vacation and there was no cell service. That should be the goal. Well, that's what, I accepted it.
It was true.
You were very specific about where you were.
Doesn't work when it's turned off.
Yeah. It didn't work when it was turned on, either.
That's a good vacation.
So Mayor Ward and members of the council, Tom Bonniget, Deputy Public Works Director. So this item before you is at your request to consider the potential to hire a consultant to do some static view simulations. I provided some background in the report. And with that, I'll answer any questions you have about this item.
I do have a question. I think we can move quickly on it. But how are they going to know? Because the TCA represents that these ideas are so far upstream, they don't even know. And we have been to public forums where they kind of just draw a squiggly line on a map. So how will they know?
They won't. The consultant, and so this is going to be a heavily assumptioned and caveated guess at what a toll road might look like. And we'll inform that. And we don't know, because as TCA represented, it's correct, there is no design, there's no preliminary design, there's no conceptual design. So what we would do is probably look to other elements of the 241 to inform what a roadway, right-of-way would look like, make some assumptions about whether a roadway could be embedded and graded into a hillside versus bridges, and just note, you know, the assumptions we're using in terms of roadway width and at surface, and do our best. But it's still going to be really a guess, because it's not based on any design that's been developed, because there is no design.
Okay, and then-
So we have to be aware that it's a guess of one possibility, and we don't even know if it's going to be the right possibility.
And in that spirit, you may have seen on social media, people are, there was a thread saying, why would we do this? Because we're kind of designing for them where the route would go. And I thought that was kind of an interesting point that we should talk about among ourselves.
Well, we kind of have a gist where it has to go, by what they're saying, you know, between homes and, I mean, they've told us that they're not going to take any homes, so we kind of know somewhat. But like Tom said, we don't know if they're going to go below grade, which is disconcerting, or ride the wave of the ridge lines. You know, if you look at the 73, that thing is cut, but then it's, the grade is huge.
My concern is, is that we spend the money, we put it out there, and then they come back with, nah, 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 nah. That was never, we're never going to be doing that. We never said that. And all of a sudden, they just blow it as a city spinning and blowing smoke, and it becomes a negative impact on us now. That's my concern, that maybe we need them to be more firm on what they're going to do, and then pull the trigger on showing it.
They're not going to do that. That's my-
That is the risk. I mean, this is, typically, you would have at least a conceptual design before you get into various view simulations that I know you've seen for other projects, which is based on a rough building footprint or something. So if we were to get the direction to do it, we would just have to make a lot of assumptions and guesses based on where we see the lines on the map, and the grading, and the topography, and what a road right-of-way would look like. And, but it would just be really a wild guess.
Can you describe even what the simulations are of? Because I couldn't tell from this. Are we leaving it up to this contract?
You mean where they would be?
Right, where?
So we envisioned to do, say, three views of each of the two alignments that are proposed through town. And we don't even have necessarily defined where those views would be. Probably what we would do is work with the consultant and figure out where we could make some even reasonable approximations and assumptions, and develop some proposed locations, perhaps run that back to the city manager, just to make sure we're okay. And for example, on the Pico corridor, we know that the line comes down the map roughly through the Marblehead in an open space along Pico, so maybe some view of what it might look like coming down there. I think interchange connections at I-5 are too difficult and too, I mean, we-
That's what I wanted to see.
Right, and it's just, there's so much-
That's the key to-
I don't know if we can do that with anything that would closely resemble reality.
Why can't we look at, they're designing a 241-91 connection right now, that's a flyover from the 241 to the 91.
We can talk to the consultant, but I think those would be the most, my feeling would be the most difficult to get an accurate portrayal. But we'll work with the consultant and their expertise to see what we could come up with. Again, looking at other highway connections potentially to inform it. But coming up with selected locations, and like I say, we could come back to your council, or through the city manager, say, here's where we think we want to do, here's the angle, here's the shot, if you will, and then, and go develop those.
I'm guessing that what we'd have to lead with is, the TCA is, has not been given any information. They're trying to get some things through even before we really know. But based upon what they're talking about, it could be this, or it could be that. It could be this, or it could be that. None of that is going to be beneficial or good for our town. So it's going to probably maybe have, of each, you say, three of each, maybe we need to have three of each in A and B, as far as what their options could be. Just showing, trying to eliminate or highlight as many things as we can as what they might be, might be doing to us. I'm just, I'm just trying to, I would love the visuals to be, have as many options as possible in there, telling the residents of San Clemente what they're looking to try to possibly do to us.
Tom, I need some clarification on exactly what these visuals are, because at one point it says it's still image, but further kind of alludes to the fact that it'd be a simulation.
Yeah, visuals.
Well, that's what we talk about. It's simulating, it's still a static, and what do we mean by static or still image? Instead of, think back, the most recent example is if there was a non-still or video animation simulation that OCT and Caltrans provided for the Pico interchange. If you remember the flyover and the animated video, that's not what we're talking about, because there's just too little detail. So we're talking about what you've probably seen for other projects where it's a still image, it's a simulation of, oh, there's a lot here, and we want to put a proposed building, and here's how it would look based on the design. And so what we would be doing, or the consultant would be doing, is something similar, where we would be making assumptions about, well, it's a 100-foot-wide roadway right-of-way with four lanes and a certain width median, and based on the topography and the grading, on some view, still shot of, well, here's what it would look like if you were standing on Pico looking at the side of the hill. How would the grading work to try and make that happen, if in fact, you could do it without a bridge?
So it'd be six views of each option?
Three of each. We had to just make some assumptions. So you could do two of one, four of the other, if you want to add more. We'd have to talk to the consultant about scope. But there are two main potential alignments, as you're aware, running through the middle of San Clemente. So we thought, well, if we tried to do three views on each to give some flavor of what you would see at different vantage points, if you, your council decided maybe we want four on the Lapata-Pico one and two, or if you want to do more, it would just be more cost.
And how did we come to that number? There was only one person who applied. Is there some back-
Well, we have an on-call contract with four consultants that your council approved a few years ago. So as needed services, we asked those consultants, or the three that had the expertise to do this, but others said they were busy or just didn't feel they could do it with limited information. Kimblinghorn, the proposal here, we got one, and, you know, they said, well, here's what we could do to take a crack at it.
How did we end up at $27,000?
So it was their proposal, just based on, we gave them assumptions on, propose on this. So we said, just tell us a cost for your effort to do up to six still simulations, three for each of two alignments. And that was their proposed cost, plus some direct costs for reproduction and typical.
How's our GIS contract, we are working for the city? Is it as good as the guy who made the cool peer renderings, or?
I don't know.
John James's office, the peer renderings that our GIS, previous GIS employee made? Is the GIS guy that good?
We have a new contract, new person doing that kind of stuff.
So I'm saying, is he that good?
I don't think he's capable of doing this kind of work.
I don't know what they're-
Really?
Right.
It is a little bit different. You're using different kind of software. You're actually doing a kind of 3D rendering, which I don't think is necessarily in the bailiwick of the GIS.
Oh, okay, circle cards.
Yeah, let's hear from the public. Don, you are number one, followed by Brenda Miller, followed by Josh Hirschman.
Good evening, City Council. Don Kunzie, San Clemente. I want to thank the City Council for voting 5-0 on no toll road on this proposal. I feel that quite possibly my gadfly chowder that you tasted over the years helped you see the light. This agenda item wants the city to see a toll road that you already voted not to see. Visually, I have a proposal here, okay? It cost me $3, okay? And there's my visual, okay? Memorial Day is coming up, and it's a sale. I'll sell it to you for $2. James, with the reduction staff of the number of employees you've done, I'm sure you can afford this. Thank you very much.
Brenda Miller, followed by Josh Hirschman.
Would it be possible to put the map up that was in the staff report?
That's a good idea. It's page three.
Time to get rid of it?
No, we're not. I'm not timing her.
I did like Don's words, though. You're asking to see something you said you didn't want to see.
Right.
That's good.
So don't draw a picture of it?
Actually, we're trying to get other people to be able to vision it, is what we're doing.
This would be good for everyone at home to be able to see the map also.
Yeah, Tom should have added up in the first place.
He can have a three-piece suit on today, so he's a little slow.
There you go.
Yep, that's it.
Yes, yes. Okay, are we ready? Tic-tic. Okay. San Clemente is the Walden Pond of Orange County. I've been to both places. I was born and raised in Orange County, and it has changed significantly. I applaud the opportunity to create our own view simulations. And the reason is, when those simulations are made by other agencies or a private party that is not representative of San Clemente residents, we all are very critical of the methods and assumptions that are used to create those images. If we make our own, whether it's of a project we want or not, we can control the degree to which they are accurate and honest. That's critical. Now, looking at the map, only one option, and actually, none of the options south of Ortega Highway provide people with any alternative to getting in a car. 14, merging with the 5 down Pico, forces people into their car and keeps them there until they get to Oceanside. There are three rail stations, the pier, ours, four rail stations, San Juan Capistrano, and the Mission Viejo station. We must implore and require the TCA to make use of particularly the Mission Viejo Laguna Nigal station at the intersection of Avery and the 73. That will enable all the people who live up there off of Antonio Parkway and in the ranch planning areas that are being developed, to actually have a viable mode of transportation that will reduce the strain on the entire system. That's what I would like to keep you, have you keep in mind. And whether this is an issue of timing or not, perhaps that's valid. But don't set aside permanently the idea of investing in our own simulations so that our residents can rely upon those methods and assumptions. So, thank you.
Mr. Hirschman?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Ward and council members, thank you so much for all that you do. We appreciate it very, very much. I recently moved here within the last year, so I can't-
appreciate it very, very much. I recently moved here within the last year, so I can't say that I've been a lifelong, I'm from Chicago, Illinois, not far from downtown, although we, I grew up in Joliet and lived in Long Grove for many, many years, and we literally blocked the tollway from coming through our village. Our village is Long Grove, Illinois. You can look it up online, and how they've stopped Route 53 and Route 355 from coming through the village. The one thing we never did is create pictures to help them. And Council Ms. Suarez, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I don't want to help them in any way. I live right now in Reserve North. You can imagine the impact that this is going to have on Reserve North and Reserve East. And Mayor Ward, with all due respect, we've been told that there's a possibility that a couple houses are in jeopardy of being taken out because of this. And the other astronomical, the thought of putting this over a high school or anywhere near a high school is ludicrous, is absolutely, we talk about, and coming out here from Chicago, we don't know about earthquakes, but I think all of you do. If there were to be an earthquake, God forbid, and there's a tollway anywhere near where the kids are going to school, you're jeopardizing, you're putting that San Clemente High School, you're putting those kids' lives in jeopardy. And we're even talking about this? This is absolutely, all I can say is that I appreciate your time, appreciate what you've done. Save the money for a lawsuit. We got to stop, you got to stop the settlement. They bought out the environmental people. That's, it's so obvious. They bought out the environmental people, they bought off the surf riders, from my understanding. And so they back off, and now all of a sudden, we're left with, okay, let's see who else can try and fight us. We'll buy them off, too. It's the wrong thing, the wrong way to go. And I just am real concerned about creating a picture. It's just like drawing, you know, let's draw the monster and then say he's going to come after us. And I just, I really am troubled with that, with that idea. I don't think it goes anywhere. As I say, we'll be glad to give you the model for blocking a 12-lane highway by looking at Long Grove, Illinois. Thank you very much.
Long Grove, does Steph have that? Long Grove, Illinois?
They do now.
Okay, we have one more card. Eric List?
Good evening. So, just as a disclaimer, I just found out about this a few hours ago, this proposed project. I'm a graphic designer, 3D artist, augmented reality app developer, and this is like, this visualization, if you want to call it, is something that I can do in my sleep. Now, not to toot my own horn, but, you know, I would really like to take on a project like this, to give back to the place that I've lived my whole life. And obviously making a couple bucks, but I can honestly tell you that $27,000 is entirely too much, okay? Now, I'll tell you what I would give you guys for $27,000. I just jotted down a couple things here. Social media campaign, to inform people, first off, of what we're looking at here, because I found out about this two hours ago, and there's no media coverage. I am completely uneducated about this crappy project, you know? And I'm going to be living here, hopefully, for a long time, and I'm going to have to deal with this, and my kids are going to have to deal with this. So it's kind of a serious thing. So a social media package, educating people, obviously, you get your little fly-through, however we want to do this, but it needs to be built intelligently. And what I mean by that is, this is a noodle fest happening here, okay? And it needs to be updatable and dynamic, so that when Joe Schmo over here says, hey, we're shifting it over 12 feet, we don't have to go back to the drawing board. You know, that's the beauty behind 3D, is you can make elements, if you think right and build it right, to update without killing yourself, okay? So creating a fly-through of some sort, that's up to you guys. And I had this idea, I've been doing a lot of augmented reality, does anybody know what that is? So it's the ability to take your phone and augment what you see in front of you with 3D objects. I have a couple projects that I brought with me of this, where I've received CAD files from engineers. I kind of do my thing to it, and you can now see this content in a 3D environment using your phone. And this is a great way, if you guys all had it, you could be discussing, doing whatever you guys need to do, and have this as an extra tool to educate people that are of importance. So that's what I would give. I would, social media campaign, like a little commercial spot, a fly-through of some sort, and a little app to take home, you know? I feel like that's something that will give you guys enough tools and us enough tools to crush this thing.
Can you explain what a fly-through is?
So, the way I would tackle something like this, I would either use, I can take information from Google Maps, have you ever seen the 3D view, and overlay the proposed routes using my 3D platform. And we can either do a full 3D, where the whole environment's based off of the Google Maps and these 3D files that we could build out, or take a drone, fly it up, and we track the areas, and we add the 3D to the shots.
From above?
Yes, a drone would be flying up.
No, I mean, would the visual, the simulations only be from above?
Yeah, or underneath, under the bridge, like whatever you want to do. That's the beauty behind, you know, being able to track this stuff. I mean, you could do whatever you want, really. But I just, I feel like one stinking image, no offense, wherever you are, but it's just too much. So I saw this, and I like jumped out of my seat when I saw this, because I feel like it's some kind of call for me to help out and help out the city. So if you guys want to see anything, I've got tons of content to show you that I'm a person of...
Yeah, we can't do that tonight.
Yeah, that's cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tom, can we accept a bid from just some random person that comes up, or do they have to be a qualified bidder? I mean, not right now, obviously, but if we open it back up?
Then we have to open it back up and go through a request for proposals. That's why we used our current process to try and save time to get back to you at your request. But otherwise, we would have to develop a set of kind of specs, put it out there, and do a formal RFP process.
Got it. You know, contrary to what some of the people in the audience said tonight, you know, my biggest issue with this is that I still, on a daily basis, and get them emails, and I'm sure most of you are, from people who have, it's the first time they're hearing about it. I'm still running people in the street that think, that tell me, oh, congratulations, we stopped the toll road. It's not coming. And so the reason behind the simulation, I think it was Tim's idea, is so we have something to show people and go, okay, this is the junk that's coming down the Pike right now. This isn't just some line on a map, this is people's houses, it's people's neighborhoods, and this is what's going to happen. I'm concerned about $27,000 for six images. I mean, that seems ludicrous to me. I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'm missing the boat on that.
The work, the image itself, the work is in putting together the wireframe design model on which the image is based. You don't just do an image and draw it in there. I've already seen that crud on Facebook. It's not anywhere close to reality, and I bless the heart of the person who's trying to do it, but he's caveated that, you know, it's not anywhere close. To make this somewhat, I don't want to say defensible, but realistic, you put together almost a little conceptual design and a grading and a wireframe on how the cuts and how the fills and how the roadway sets in into the road to be able to come up with a wireframe, then the image is built around and filled in. That's where the work comes. It's almost like coming up with little segments of conceptual design to say, well, here's what 100-foot ride roadway would look like cut into that hillside. So maybe it is a lot, again, based on the uncertainty that the consultant has to do that, and they don't have a design upon which to take it. Normally, we would have a 3D CAD model and give it to someone, and they could come up with a wireframe and develop flyovers and animations fairly easily. But we're starting from nothing. So that's where the challenge lies, and...
Tom, it doesn't say how long, from the point you would get approval on this, how long does it take?
We need to talk about that with the consultant that's open-ended, about how long it would take to go through those assumptions. And so I don't have a schedule.
Weeks, months?
Probably somewhere in between, in between there.
Because the other thing that's going through my mind is there's the public forum coming up at Saddleback in, you know, June.
June 5.
And then you would know better than the other three of us, is TCA even close to narrowing down the options?
No, they have said nothing, and they, it seems to be a moving target of where that is. And we just added idea number 18, because that was required to be in the study. So I have no idea what that's going to do to the timeline.
Because there may be merit in pushing this off until, A, Tim can be here, because yes, it was his idea, and B, get that public hearing behind us, and hear if any new routes are sprung on South Orange County.
Man, you know, the biggest issue for me is, you know, maybe, may have read too much into it, but 14 has been talked about for a long time, whether it was official or unofficial. And so in my heart of hearts, I believe that's what they're going to come at us with. The rest is just, you know, like I mentioned previously, to divide us and to get us fighting amongst ourselves. So to not move forward with some simulations, Sims, that show exactly what that's going to look like, or close to it, as Brenda pointed out, I think, does herself a disservice. I mean, I don't know how else we can scream about that.
In your mind's eye, because I'm getting stuck, and this is going to be the dilemma for the consultant, is that a flyover from the landfill to the five? Or are there on-ramp and off-ramps at Lapata and Vista Hermosa? And, oh, by the way, you can jump off at Pico before you proceed onto the five, you know?
You just opened up a whole new can of horrible worms that I've never even perceived of, Florrie, so thanks for doing that.
Well, because this is the nightmare.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, and so...
Well, you mean, it's real.
Yeah, and so...
But they're not saying what they want to do.
Yeah.
So there could be a lot of combinations of how it can happen. My main thing, the connection at Pico, you know, in that corridor, and by the high school, is going to be huge. So I thought that was something that we should show.
Palazada, yeah.
And also, anything that's close to homes, anything that's going to destroy businesses, you know, those seem to be major connections. Lapata is a big question mark, because even our supervisor doesn't tell us what's going on with that road.
I'd like to see this, I'd like to put this off, and maybe come back to us and have someone flesh it out more as to, you know, what we're going to, you know, understanding, we need to show all the impact spots. And I don't think three photos of each of the route is going to accomplish that. So I'm inclined to say, we need more, we need a better concept given to us of what we're going to get, and understanding that we want to be able to show to the public where the impacts are going to be mostly felt on our city.
I think we have enough to go on from your commentary tonight, that we can regroup over the next couple weeks and come back on the 6th, if that is what the council wants. And we'll have Tim back here at that time.
Before we do that, though, I have one more question of staff. So, Tom, do your best, and I appreciate your staff report, I think it was well-written. Bill Cameron, what are your personal thoughts? Give it to us straight, on this issue.
On the action before you?
Yeah.
I think it's premature. Just because we don't have anything to work off, we're guessing, and that makes me professionally a little bit nervous.
Okay.
Because it could negatively come back to us, because we've already seen them go after that poor young man who did the simulations just to help people.
What do you think of that?
Well, I know your council wants to be credible, and...
TCA is attacking the young man who did the simulations out of the goodness of his heart, just to show people.
What do you mean by attack?
Saying it's not accurate, and so it's misinformation. And so because it's misinformation, anything else that anyone's talking about is also misinformation.
Gotcha.
So it does cloud.
But yet, they can go ahead and change the lines and change the numbers from 14 to 15 to 13 to 16 to 17.
And the time.
And decide what is accurate and everything, but yet, people come out, their whole process is disingenuous.
Okay, so let's bring it back, June 6th. That'll be the motion. And you've heard some pretty useful information to maybe sharpen up the approach. I think you're hearing that six images isn't going to do it for us, and that we have a lot of interest in the high-impact points, especially around the freeway, how these options would connect. And the meeting is, do you have that specific information? Because we should let the public know to be at Saddleback College.
Can I just reiterate what Lori said for the media that is listening? So she brought in a whole new level of ludicrousness into this council chambers by mentioning that we could have a Lapata off-ramp, a Hermosa off-ramp, and a Pico off-ramp on top of the connection between the five. That's mind-blowing. I mean, that's worse than worst-case scenario. I mean, that's a million times worse than I even pictured in my head. So...
Monday, June 5th at 5:30.
Yeah, yeah.
Monday, June 5th at 5:30.
So, go ahead.
All right. So the TCA public forum is Monday, June 5th, 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM, and it's at 28,000 Marguerite Parkway, Mission Viejo.
Which is Saddleback Church.
Church or college?
It's Saddleback College.
It's Saddleback College, and it's room SM 313, parking lot 10.
So I was told the parking will be free and carpool. It's more fun, grab all your neighbors to show up. Okay, so do you have enough direction?
Could you just reiterate that we'll come back at your first meeting in June, that the council's desire to have more viewpoints in our report will provide suggestions of where those would be and why. Work with the consultant on refining a cost that reflects that. And I think that was kind of the main thrust. Did I miss any of the key points?
And also, if you could set our expectation on timing, you know?
Oh, and we'll talk about schedule on, okay. Yes.
Okay, so, we don't need a motion to continue it, do we?
No.
Okay.
My mind is blown. I got to say, Lori, you destroyed me.
Well, they are the transportation corridor. They are planning our transportation.
Yeah.
On their own.
Three off-ramps. So I mean, that's how you get to the point where you're taking homes. I mean, if you just do a roadway, you can squeeze it, but...
Thank you.
Oral Communications Part 2. I don't have any cards. City Manager?
Yeah, so I have something pretty cool to share with the council, if Laura would pull it up. We just completed our video press release for the trolley ribbon-cutting, and so with that, I wanted to show this quick video that will be put out on YouTube and Facebook and all of our different social media outlets to promote the trolley.
Blackout of cars.
No, let's watch it.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Rosales, Senior Transportation Engineer at the City of San Clemente. It is with great excitement that I announce the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the San Clemente trolley. You are invited to join San Clemente City Council in celebrating the trolley unveiling at the ribbon-cutting ceremony on Friday, May 26th at 10:00 AM. The ceremony will be at Parque del Mar, located in the Pier Bowl. This is the first stop on the trolley route. Stick around after the ceremony to jump on the trolley at 12:00 noon and be one of the first to ride the trolley. If you can't make it to the ceremony, the San Clemente trolley will be cruising the coastline all summer long. The trolley hours are Thursdays, 12:00 noon to 10:00 PM, Fridays, 12:00 noon to 10:00 PM, Saturdays, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sundays, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The trolley will also be operating on Memorial Day, the 4th of July, and Labor Day. Running northbound and southbound throughout San Clemente, the trolley stops at 16 different locations, including the San Clemente Pier. Look at the view. Who doesn't want to get off here? Avenida del Mar and Olavista, stop for a bite to eat and enjoy shopping in our beautiful downtown. The outlets at San Clemente find great shopping deals from a variety of name brands, and if you're coming from out of town, we have you covered, because the trolley stops at the Metrolink Station. Don't forget, the trolley service begins Friday, May 26th at 12:00 noon. We look forward to seeing you on the trolley.
So I have to give a shout-out to Samantha Thomas, who oversaw this video press release, and obviously Jennifer, our cable TV employee as well, that helped film it. So great job to the staff.
How many clicks does a world's most boring video have? Are we up to two yet?
Hey, I got to shoot.
That's not fair. I try to take mine off all the time, too.
I'm shooting mine tomorrow, so...
That's all I have to report.
City Attorney?
Nothing more here, thanks.
Councilmembers?
Go ahead.
I attended the CEP panel, but I'd rather wait till when Tim is here to talk about that, and also nothing to report from the library meeting for the quarter.
Okay, I have a couple things, Laura. If you can put up maybe the Hero's Luncheon, the... On May 3rd, I attended the Hero's Luncheon given by the American Red Cross. This is the young man that you see in the suit there. His name is Bennett Jonas. He saved seven children. He is a model, he's a San Clemente resident, but he is a model in New York, and he was skateboarding in Central Park and heard these children falling into the ice on the lake. And he ran over there with another model that he was working with. And he is a graduate of our Junior Guards. So, he went into that training and saved all of those kids. Some of them, the last one was actually unconscious under the water and was able to bring them out, and all seven were rescued. So that is his wonderful family. The man on the left is the owner of Wahoo's, and it turns out he supplies a lot of dinners for Red Cross events. So that is great. Next slide, oh, these are our two deputies. On the left is branded, I hope I don't say his name wrong, Brandon Koenig and Jeremy Baraglia. And they saved a gentleman that had drowned, was non-responsive in a hot tub here in San Clemente, an older gentleman. And then, we have another slide, and I hope I don't butcher his name. Steve Concilag? He received a lifetime contribution award. He is with the Orange County Fire Authority. And so I wanted to recognize him, so Chris would know that he got that award. Next slides that we have, we attended the Jim Johnson Sports Park opening ribbon-cutting. That is Mimi Johnson there. She did a wonderful job talking about Jim. And he had one of his friends there that helped him build Marblehead and had nothing but good things to say. This park has, can you show actual ribbon-cutting? We cut this ribbon. Councilmember Mayor Proton Brown was there, and Councilmember Doncheck. And that is all of our, no, our Beaches Parks and Rec. They were like all there for this opening. And I want to say Laurie got out of the way of those kids behind us in record time. I mean, we were all afraid to cut that ribbon, but they ran, she got out of the way faster. But that is all of our Beaches Parks and Rec. Here's one of the wonderful sports fields that they went out on. And then, I think the last picture is of basketball. But you showed it first, that's okay. But it was a great event, and we're lucky that we had a person like Jim Johnson in San Clemente to care about our kids and how Marblehead turned out and our open space. The last thing I want to do is I have some mayor announcements real quick. The city is currently accepting applications for the following positions: Public Safety Task Force. The applications are due by this Thursday, May 18th. So if you want to say on how we interact with our Sheriff's Department and things that this community would like to see, please join the Public Safety Task Force and apply for it. Applications also are for standing commissions and committees, and those are due by June 15th. We're asking applications for Planning Commission, Beaches Park and Recreation Commission, Human Affairs Committee, Coastal Advisory Committee, Golf Course Committee, and also Investment Advisory Committee. So if anyone is interested in that, you can obtain information and an application on these positions at our city's homepage at www.sanclemente, or, I'm sorry, sand-clemente.org. And please apply for these, May 18th for the Public Safety Task Force, and by June 15th for all other applications. And if you have any questions, just contact City Hall. That's it.
Okay, with that, it moves that we adjourn to an adjourned regular meeting to be held on May 22nd, 2017, at 4:00 PM. For the purpose, considering fiscal years 2017, '18 city budget, the meeting will take place in the City Council Chambers, located at 100 Avenue Presidio San Clemente, California. Subsequently, adjourned meeting will be held on May 30th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. For the purpose of meeting in joint session with the city's commissions and committees, the meeting will take place at the San Clemente Golf Course Wedgewood Banker Room, located at 150 Avenue de Magdalena, San Clemente, California. In addition to the above, an adjourned regular meeting will be held on May 31st, 2017, at the time determined. The meeting?
Please have that time.
This is for the interviews and appointments to the Public Safety Task Force. You previously set May 31st as the date, but the time wasn't established. We have, so far, we have nine applications.
3:00 PM? That's what I have on my calendar.
What day of the week is that?
Wednesday. It's on my calendar at 3:00. So someone already put it in there.
I think that Veronica just wanted to wipe, to reserve the whole time so that...
I think we can do four, you guys want to do four?
Four sounds good for me.
Okay.
So, in addition to the above, adjourned regular meeting will be held on May 31st, 2017, at 4:00 PM. The meeting will take place in the Council Chambers, located at 100 Avenue Presidio San Clemente. For the purpose of interviewing and making appointments of public members to the Public Safety Task Force, the next regular council meeting will be held on June 6th, 2017, in the Council Chambers, located at 100 Avenue Presidio San Clemente, California. Close session will begin at 5:00 PM. The regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 PM.
Motion by hand, second by Doncheck. All in favor?
Aye.